All right, good evening everyone. It's seven PM, so I will call the meeting to order. Hopefully you do the vote call. Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Arnold?
Here.
Mrs. Bruderly, here. Mrs. Greaterx, here. Ms. Kengus, here. Mr. Lundey?
Here.
Mrs. Zawara, here. Mr. O'Hevers?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Moving on to the next meeting. The next lineup is our meeting minutes. Our package includes meeting minutes from September 12th to September 2nd. I'm over at the Board of Education, approve the meeting minutes from nine twelve to twenty five ten.
That's exciting.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll put it to the votes to approve the meeting minutes from September 12th, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. They have been passed unanimously. All right, moving on, we've got the approval of the agenda. Board of Policy provides the superintendent of schools, so prepare an agenda for all board meetings as directed by the President of the Board of Education.
I'll move that the Board of Education approved the agenda as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Just wanted to point out that two additional hires that were not posted on Thursday. Right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor to approve the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, we move on to our school presentations, which are our M-Step data. Dr. Dennis?
We have Ryan Bruegers here, we're going to go through M-Step data. We received the scores were publicly released the Thursday before Labor Day weekend. Things kind of process the data, build our tier, look at how we learn trends look like. As a reminder, the last time we actually gave the test was in eighteen nineteen. Then we'd be comparable. And we went through nineteen twenty and shut down in the spring of twenty twenty. And then went through voluntary in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. And then last year, we gave the test again. So there, the data comparisons, we compared to the state. We have a comparison group of similar school districts with similar free reduced lunch rates around the state. And then we looked at trends, so this is actually our first chance to look at, okay. After three, three years of not having given the test, and a whole bunch of chaos, where are we? So as we go through, talk through where we are.
So what we're hoping you all will see today are some Dexter trends. So we've broken down the slide deck into a few different slides, and I'll show you the master key in just a second here. One slide, you'll see a grade level, you'll see a subject area, then you'll see Dexter's historical data. And then the very next slide, you'll see that same test data compared to our peer group that Chris just outlined. So we'll be able to show you how we are doing internally and how we are doing with those like peers. We've also pulled some subgroups, just initially, I know that a lot of times we would talk about gender as well as economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged students. We also like to present, as Chris outlined, we have a peer group of forty seven like districts, and there are some of the names up there of districts that we will be comparing Dexter's data to this evening. So this is Dexter Community Schools Achievement Over Time, this is for all M-Step, this is an aggregate average. As you can see, we are starting to make an increase and incline back to this, the scores that we previously saw before COVID. So absolutely excellent. Throughout the evening, as we look at data, hopefully you'll see a positive trend in almost every grade and almost every content area. When we look at our trends and we think about directionality, we think about speed. Of course, we'd love speed to be pretty quick, but directionality is more important, and we have a lot of positive growth to celebrate this evening.
So we're going to see the pattern, for example, when we look at aggregate data district wide. ELA, aggregate is pretty close to perfect work during pandemic. Math is where we saw the biggest impact through the pandemic. Especially through the virtual delivery and then just trying to work through supporting students. One challenge with just to know as far as M-Step data, it really is like. It's not like you go back in time effects, you have to figure out what you're doing forward. We use that WEA data, other data points to be able to adjust instruction. This is really, these students took this test in March and April of this year, of this twenty twenty two. So it's been months, we've been getting data, it's not that usable for making instructional decisions, but it gives you a snapshot of where we stand.
So breaking down our testing based on male, female. On that top graph, you'll see our ELA scores over time, all the way back from twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen to present day. That yellow line for ELA represents female students. That teal aqua line representing male students, and that darker blue is the average. So in ELA, we have female students carrying, leading scores, carrying the average in ELA. In mathematics, we see an inverse there with male students. We are constantly having conversation with our admin team, our teachers about this, and just trying to think about who causes and ways that we can help support and close the need and all achievement gaps. Economically disadvantaged versus non-economically disadvantaged students. So again, that dark blue line remains our mean average for all students. Green being our economically disadvantaged students. Like to stand up and identify, celebrate the huge growth from twenty twenty, twenty twenty one to twenty one, twenty two. Just a nice growth trajectory for our economically disadvantaged students. Getting back into buildings and getting back to basics was absolutely terrific for all of our students, but particularly our economically disadvantaged students.
And prior to the pandemic, we were incrementally making some gains, especially in reading. A lot of times you can predict math scores from the reading scores, because every test is essentially a reading test. They have to be able to read the question and know what being asked or what the subject. So we're making some pretty strong gains with our economically disadvantaged kids, and I'm just like, we need to. Go back over.
Do you have the numbers on how many students, what percentage of students in each, just overall took the test at that?
We have that, at least ninety five percent of our students take the test, so that was above ninety.
Even last year.
In this, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
That's what I meant, sorry.
Yeah, over above ninety five percent. What did it say, about sixty, seventy? It was around ninety four, twenty five percent. That's a really economically disadvantaged, one hundred and ten percent. We've been just ninety five percent. You know, if you, if you, I can't, but, so the drop is pretty significant. Like, saw that, so true. But the drop between all and ninety, ninety five percent, pretty, pretty. It's kind of the average. Is there a reason why?
Is there a reason why the non-economically disadvantaged and the average are so close?
Yeah.
Well, ninety percent of our district doesn't qualify in that non-economically disadvantaged, so if you think about the proportion, yeah, it would, it would just be closer to that average. Good question. And Jeff, for your point, any of these numbers that you'd like to pin down, to get specific end values, we can absolutely do that later, just let me know which ones you'd like to look at. So with the slides with the maroon backing, we'll be comparing ourselves to that peer group, those forty seven districts. So here is our overall average compared to our peer districts. Maroon's going to represent Dexter. Yellow is going to represent that peer group, and blue is the state of Michigan. So again, just like we looked at with our NWA scores previously, Dexter is definitely well ahead of state average. And our overall average for students third grade through eleventh grade that took that M-Step assessment. We are just, you know, exactly where we need to be in leading our peer group.
And if you look, so I started in two thousand thirteen, so I remember working through this data, we didn't have the next student yet. We were really pushing in terms of academic growth. And what was happening is we actually talked at, and did prior members, we talked at the board level. We're going to hit some ceiling at some point, and it's going to be a challenge. And right around this time, in around two thousand eighteen, when we were starting the book study, analysis of mental health. We were, we initially had some goals across the district. Specifically with the high school, some of the goals I was evaluating on were to increase the number of kids taking an A and I D classes, which means computer program work, et cetera. And then we started to see such an increase, we started to back off a little bit, going, stressing our kids out, we're going to think about down. So we knew here it was either going to kind of find out at some point or incrementally go up, instead we went down. Pandemic, we're working our way back up. But there is a threshold and standardized test of how high you can really bring up the test score. So when we look, like our peer group that we pulled, are all the districts with twenty or twenty five percent free reduced lunch over. So it's Troy, Newfield, Dallas, Rosemont, Rosemont. Celine.
Ann Arbor.
Ann Arbor, Chelsea. It is very similar to that, it's sort of the West Side State, lots of similar communities, it's similar community. So it's a nice comparison group, we look at what our counties are, and their trend dropped, and then picked up at the same place as ours. When we try to do one actual composite score. Yeah, there was some, some of that was us taking a foot off the gas a little bit. If we were a little concerned, we were pushing to the art, started to get a little creative, but we, we haven't seen the data clean enough, you know, what exactly impacts in grade levels. You'll see it. Yeah, we, I mean, it was stressing. It was, we had a lot of conversation about students wishing.
I think we shifted our goal someplace along, right? I wanted to roll, so.
So again, as we start to look at individual grade levels and individual tests or individual assessments, hopefully you'll be able to take a peek at that green trend line and see a lot of positive growth from the last year at each level. Some are more stacked and some have declined a little bit, and as Chris mentioned, as a leadership team, we're looking at each grade level, each assessment, having meaningful conversations. As blue back slides will be Dexter's data. That light blue bar graph is going to be the rest of Washington County, so WIST schools, the WIST average, and yellow will be the state average. So again, our data at almost every level is well above the state level and well above WIST's averages.
So what we see is that in this last round, we're pretty close to third grade ELAs. Which is reassuring, we have a lot of.
And again, those red back will be us compared to peer groups, us being the maroon line, gold being the pure.
You can see a trend that even back in two thousand fifteen, our third grade ELAs lower than our peer groups. So we have some work to do with the youngest grades. We have been historically really trying to balance early childhood and trying to do as much development. Now we're building strong foundation. Historically, what would happen is our reading scores at the youngest grades, we kind of loaded this area, and then we digged into sixth, seventh, eighth grades, we would skyrocket. And it was every group historically, there were peers.
If you remember a few weeks ago, when we looked at our NWA data in our early grades, the trend was very similar. We trailed that peer group, and then around fifth, sixth, seventh grade, all of a sudden, there's a change. And we'll see a similar pattern in today's M-Step data. So third grade math, again, we've seen positive growth between twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty two, again, beating the WIST as well as the rest of the state.
One thing that was heavy here is we were in the midst of our everyday learning math limitation, we saw the towards that. And we need to see what this drop is part pandemic, but there's probably other reasons.
And here's our math compared to peer group, really nice growth back toward that top line.
Ever past that, we're above pre-pandemic. This year was just. So it's really very clear, and here we have a negative trend line, which one would expect, but look, it's more than the peer groups. It's worth. Do you think that? You can talk it, you can talk it. They were. No, it's, it's usually a series. Sorry. We, it's usually a series, because we're going to talk when we touch.
Fourth grade ELA, so again, really nice, real steep growth there. To be celebrated, not only fourth grade, but the second, third, and fourth grade, and all new grades prior, again, thinking about that as coming out of pandemic. And just, that was a big group that we were concerned about, right? These were second, third graders during the pandemic, during virtual learning, and seeing them rebound almost to the level that they were at our highest is absolutely to be celebrated. Yeah, we're starting to see Dexter overtaking that peer group in certain grades, and it'll become more of a trend as we continue. Fourth grade math, again, we saw that pandemic dip, and then again bouncing back, really nice compared to previous scores. As Chris alluded to, not quite to the levels that we once had, but we are in a positive trajectory.
Yeah, and back in fifteen, sixteen up through eighteen, nineteen, these scores were at the top of those. They were in the top ten or twenty. So we were pushing out of the, thinking fourth grade, there's thousands of thousands of students. So we were, we were even high. We've made some nice gains back, we need to get to pre-pandemic levels, so we can let you pass it.
You could argue maybe that the dip during, the bigger dip than the average is because our teachers have a greater impact in teaching than some of the other schools.
Yeah, they do. And especially when you look at peer comparison here, I mean, you were that much higher. If there was one year, we were almost ninety percent of our. That's really hard to talk about the data system.
And, you know, Dick, we hypothesized about some of the data and some of the dips, and I think that one thing that I reflect on is being, being an elementary school principal during the pandemic. While of course we were worried about all content areas, we doubled down on literacy. We were so concerned about reading. We did, we were, of course, unsure how to navigate virtual learning and how to navigate, this is new. But we knew we had to focus on literacy, because we weren't going to get those minutes back. So not that math wasn't taught, of course, math, it's all the content areas were taught, but we really were intentional about literacy. And so as we're starting to see grades bounce back with the literacy, I think that was a good decision. You know, math will have, as Chris mentioned, we'll have to look at and think about moving forward, how we continue to build and grow.
I think my comment, if I wasn't slight, actually.
Yeah.
And you can see math in fourth grade, when we passed up peer group, and we were that much higher for a long time. We're up again, it's, we historically had this nice trend, but we'll see there's ripples, I mean, pandemic rippling in here, so we have to adjust it.
Fifth grade, again, positive trajectory. Catching up to that peer group. Fifth grade math.
There's more.
Yep.
So we're having. I years, we seem to have, we don't know if it's really a transition, or sometimes the tests are different, so, for example, NWA, which is the test you get in second grade. M-Step, it's third grade's the first time they take it, which is pretty similar, a bit safer. That's why I like comparing county and peer groups, to just see where we stand, and then running composite, seeing the degree, sense of where we are, we just match all the groups together. But we were, we were well above peer group for a long time, and now we're a little breaking out of the name, we're going to see what's happening. This was right against a lot of math change that we did, we were putting in place, we were at the tail end of the everyday math station, and then this was part of the summer pump. We changed the difference between everyday math and some of the sauce, it's really on, but we need to break down and see where it is now.
Sixth grade ELA, again, seeing positive trajectory in their test scores from twenty twenty one to twenty one, twenty two. Again, catching back up to that peer.
We were ahead, dropped below, almost the same. After seeing the same things, we're significant distance between the county schools. Back here, we were in the top schools in state, we're well above county.
That peer group comparison. Okay, seventh grade ELA, so we'll have seventh grade ELA and math scores for you, so we'll take a peek at those. Seventh grade ELA, again, a transition year, which is one of our hypotheses, one of the things that we're just thinking a lot about. So if it is going to be a transition year, it has the potential to impact testing or test scores, what do we need to do differently? How do we need to think differently about our teaching practice? So those are all conversations and all hypotheses that we're exploring, as Chris alluded to. We're doing a more deep data dive to really look at individual students, cohorts, classes, and really better understand the overall scores that were being presented.
So we end up, when we look back, we were seventh grade, there was, throughout these years, right here, we were within the top ten schools of all, of all those. Then we got back to almost reality, and we need to kind of get the line, go the other direction. Still above peer group, but. Same pattern, so. Still above peer group, so. I think it's interesting, because.
Yeah, so this, this graphic comes with a little bit of explanation. So on the graphs there, you work from top down, Dexter High School down to Mill Creek, so by grade levels, you have ninth grade, tenth grade, then eighth grade. This is all PSAT, EBRW is the year ELA assessment, so I think that is the language assessment, and then math is obviously the math assessment. A couple of things to note, so twenty one, twenty two was a mandatory year, so all students took the assessment. However, in twenty one, twenty twenty one, we did not have every student take the assessment. So the end change depend, the number of students that took the assessment changed depending on the grade level. So in tenth grade, we had fewer students take it, and we see a bump up in scores. So you could hypothesize why that may or may not be, but I, it was one thing that we wanted to do, deeper dive, as the team was looking at the data, we wanted to go deeper and figure out what was going on there. Again, in eighth grade PSAT, so to be celebrated, we're again, we're seeing that same positive growth, that positive trajectory that we once saw, so we're back on a good path there.
This may look really low in the way the graph portrays, but it's eighty six point five during pandemic, eighty six here, so it's essentially the same.
Yep.
And that. And we saw that district by.
So eleventh grade, remember, we change up which assessments are being taken at the high school, so eleventh grade will have science and social studies data for you. If you remember, when we looked at data previously, we talked about it. It's interesting, because the science test scores as a whole are not terrific as a state, that's a state issue that we know, something that we're collectively working on. But of the not terrific, we're the best, we're the best of the not terrific, so we, we really do, in science, social studies. And so again, we can hypothesize about the measurement tool, we can hypothesize about the expectation for students in terms of proficiency. But as we look at the next couple of slides here, you'll see Dexter is definitely leading in science and social studies.
When you look at this, this is compared to Ann Arbor High Schools, this is compared to Troy, Rochester, Rosemont, we were significantly higher in the high school than eleven grade seventh. Social studies went up, if they're really engaged in civic, civic studies. And they're blowing a little bit up.
Yeah, that one, that one really intrigued me, because in most of the other graphs, you saw Dexter following a similar trend to our cohort, to our peers, right? So if they grew a little, maybe we grew a little as well, or maybe we grew a little bit more, but this is one of the few that our peer group declined and we increased. So kind of interesting to reflect on that and think about the instructional practices, the choices that were made, why that was the case.
And fascinating, when you look at a hundred grade social studies, the state average is about forty percent range, and we're just saying. It's the significant difference. So we did. You know, with these scores, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I can pull that for you, as soon as we get it off the earth.
So then when we looked at, I broke down county, our rank in the county, so in twenty fifteen, when we looked at who was first, second, or third in the county, we were first, followed by Ann Arbor and Celine. Same in twenty sixteen, that's Celine and Ann Arbor spots, twenty seventeen, Celine and Ann Arbor spots. Twenty eighteen, it was us and it's Celine and Ann Arbor, so it's lost again. And then Celine and Ann Arbor passes up to nineteen, twenty twenty one was that goofy year, so Ann Arbor and Celine passed up now this year. This last year, Celine was the highest, us and Ann Arbor are point one points ahead. So we are, our average are positive fifty five point one, and Ann Arbor is fifty five point two. These are positive, all we have steps course.
Three through the top. This is all the grades three through the top. These are all the grades combined.
These are, this should, this is an even metrics number, I think it's just M-Step, that's three through eight. So comparatively though, it's been us, Ann Arbor, Celine, just not working. We were winning for a long time, not that we even know we were in a race. It's, we've seen our stuff drop a little bit, but it's really, it's a close difference, we're playing for Ann Arbor. So we had a couple of. So we'll end up, when we look back at the data, we know where we compare, we've broken down our groups, we'll break down the data more, we'll look at the NWA scores, we'll look at the personal practices. Some of our support system, we'll break down where to make the difference, which kids are struggling in what? Because sometimes it's a spinny key, I remember my previous district, we were on the, we were part of the race to the top legislation, right? Schools at the time, and four certain schools do a big turn. We ended up, we had gotten to the point where we looked through the test in such detail that we knew exactly how many points there were, questions. That is not a healthy way to look. There are times that something's tested that hasn't been tested in years, or that most people had no idea it existed. There are times that just gets a bad day, there's, it's a one day test, it's the looking at the trends over time. We have some positives, we have some negatives, we're through, it's true, open a trend. It is not a tool that's meant to decide if you're good or bad, it's will say, make a progress.
I think one of the most exciting things about some of our conversations around the data is that previously, where test scores were driving a lot of decisions. Right now, we are making decisions with test scores in mind, but they're not driving our decisions, right? As we think about focusing on instructional practices, as we think about focusing on the nine compliment teeth on the health, we know that indirectly, those will improve our test scores, right? As Chris said, we're not going to put together a ten step plan to improve test scores by understanding the questions around the test. We're going to continue to educate well-rounded students, and therefore test scores will improve. So this has been really great, it's really involved some great conversation amongst our leadership team and teachers, and we're looking forward to continuing the work and the path that we're on. We hope to continue to present positive growth like this for you for years to come.
I think there's two messages out of here that I do. One is how much effort's gone into analyzing and understanding data to look at how to improve, where things need to be addressed. I, I find it hard to imagine that there's a lot of other school districts that have done any more than we have to get a handle on this. Second, when we're looking at these trends, it's important to recognize, we're looking at comparing the top districts in the state, and not the state averages, because we're so far above them, there's no sense in even comparing with that. Why, with peer groups in top, and see how we compare there.
Yes, again, I mean, just as a matter of how to help our kids be successful in life, the fact that our eleventh graders in social studies understand our system of government and our history at this level compared to other districts, that's.
What you're going to do in your studies. Where the lies, a couple of things, I agree with everybody, except if, if third and fifth grade, or I would say eighth, three. I don't know if you were not, but I think drive that up to the reading earlier, and everything just continues. Because you know where you're being, whatever happened. Yeah, your problem, I'm not sure.
There are studies, you know.
We might be setting a base different than what they're measuring, that proves itself to be more useful later on.
Also, and it could be.
I have to, I have to agree.
It's the same thing on, on, on the, especially on the females. Historically, you know, steps. Shows right here again. I'm just wondering, how do we get that up?
There are, there are, there are theories of education that are focused on laybase education and not on test scores. And there are many places that don't test. So I, I believe, I believe you probably did make this earlier about the fact that they start off low, but as, as we go through. So I'm not sure personally, I go with my background to. If the score was considered low, the third grade is that. Or are they, are they being set up to advance? Right, and are they learning to, are they hopefully learning to learn and enjoying the process? Instead of learning how to take tests.
And I agree, it's just one tool. And one thing that we do know is, I mean, no third grade reading is an area we'd like to get, we like our reading sort of higher than that level. Trying to deal with the trade-offs of how you, there are, as Jennifer was saying, there are study after study, models after model. There are schools that were there to teach a kid to read all until their kids end up doing exactly the same with other kids by the time they get to middle school. We've been moving some of the reading instruction in early grades. Uh we've added, and I'll try and talk about some of the, the science of reading work we've been doing. Our last training, we held, we closed school on March thirteenth. And we held a PD day the next day on the science of reading, and then everything stopped. And then we've been through the pandemic, putting that work in the process again.
Yeah, we, we have been, uh, many schools across Michigan, across the nation have been having a revelation and awakening. They're, they're learning more about literacy, they're learning more about uh learning to read. Uh and our educators have been part of that as well. It's difficult conversation, it's difficult work, because it's contrary to a lot of the work that we previously have learned and done as educators. Uh so we are in a time of exploration, a time of learning and enlightenment. Uh we have many staff that are participating in letters training, which is often viewed as uh the gold standard for phonemic awareness. Phonology, phonics, uh early literacy skills. Uh that's been offered for free by the state of Michigan, because they see the importance in it. Uh traditionally, it's a multi-thousand dollar training per teacher. And so the fact that the state was able to pay for teachers to do this for free is terrific. Uh I've been a part of that cohort, I learned more, I, honestly, in the three-hour webinar, the first live training, I learned more in those three hours than I did in my whole collegiate, uh teacher education program. They did more teaching me how to teach children to read that I learned in two and a half years. Uh so it was absolutely incredible, we have about a third of our staff that are participating in right now. Uh as you remember, a few years ago, we adopted a new phonics program, which is aligned to the science of reading, and really is working hard. Uh to Jennifer's point, and we talked a little bit about this, I mean, the whole education process is marathon, it's a race, right? Thinking about, do, do we want to start off too fast and burn out later? Or do we want to pace ourselves at the beginning and have enough energy to the end? I don't know that there's a right or a wrong way, I think that what we're doing is working. We look at our test scores in seventh, eighth, ninth grade beyond, it's obviously working. Is there some fine tuning we can do potentially, right? Could we trip a few seconds off our mile in second and third grade, that'd be really nice. Uh maybe our time would be better in eleventh grade, but we want to be careful, right? We don't want to get back to that point where we're having the at-one-cost conversations, right? Where it's this delicate balance that we're always trying to uh be conscious of as we talk about this and as we think about preparing instruction. I know, I know they all. I, but let me clarify, so to be identified as economically disadvantaged, that would be through free and reduced lunch. A teacher wouldn't identify a student.
Right, they don't know.
Okay, absolutely, they should know, but a lot of them are. There's correlation, yeah, exactly. So I guess the question is. Administration level. So I was, I was thinking the type of anybody, how do we know?
You're asking if, if the school can identify economically disadvantaged in terms of the summer program.
Well, we can potentially have. Like the summer program is a cross-section, but we tried to target. Uh teachers generally don't. All my other summer.
Uh sooner than that, I mean, we're wrapping up our test cycle right now. So the next week and a half, students will be finishing their fall at the BA cycle. So once we get that data uploaded, we'll be able to do a data dive similar to this, if you'd like, right, WBA. And then as I discussed at a previous meeting, we'd be able to cross our students that attended SLI and thinking about their fall performance compared to their peers at the time. So I think it's a whole play here. Yeah, that's not one snapshot.
Related sort of to what Daniel was talking about with the third grade. I know that there's been discussion in the number um levels about Lucy Hawkins and all of that, where is that?
Yeah, so uh that's been a really contentious issue in education. You have schools across the nation having uh dialogue within their community, and it was in their state, uh about Lucy Hawkins used to study. Uh so Lucy Hawkins used to study is a curriculum resource, it's also a model for teaching, reading and writing. Uh it did receive some national criticism. Uh Lucy Hawkins has since revised her curriculum, so this fall, they have released the updated curriculum. Our plan as a district is in those grades that we're utilizing it, so certainly particularly kindergarten through fourth grade. Uh at minimum, we feel that we need to review the updated curriculum. She herself and her team have acknowledged that the previous curriculum isn't meeting the need of students anymore. Uh so at minimum, we want to review the update to see, is it going to match with what we have now learned to be science reading? As well as standards and teacher practice. At the same time, it makes sense for us to compare other curriculum resources while we're opening up the books, let's open up the books. Let's take a look at what else is out there and see if anything might better meet our needs. Uh so we have a ELA committee that meets regularly. Uh we met throughout last year and throughout that year last year, we did some learning. Uh we did some kind of goal setting for ourselves as a team. Uh and we have started to think about this fall, starting to pull in some curriculum resources and using different uh tools to measure the effectiveness and then to think about kind of, might Dexter be in a position where we want to consider either a new curriculum resource or adopting the updated Lucy Hawkins used to study? Uh talked to my counterparts in neighboring districts and districts across Michigan, and it's a split camp chat. There's, there's some schools that are choosing the updates, others are going in another direction. Uh and whatever we do, we want to be really thoughtful about. Uh so whatever decision's made, it will come with a plan, whether it's a one-year plan or a five-year rollout plan. We want to make sure that we're making a choice that's best for our students and best for our staff. Quiet, yes.
Thank you. Um we are now at our first opportunity for public participation. During public comment, each speaker is allowed a maximum of five minutes per twelve thirty minutes, unless otherwise notified. Each speaker will be asked to announce his or their name and district of residence and indicate if he, she, they represent any organization or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during the same meeting. Those wishing to receive a personal response from the board or superintendent must complete a public comment form available at the media entrance and on our website. In addition, as the presiding officer, I would like to remind you that public comments should pertain to Dexter and Knewry Schools, District commanders, matters and concerns related to the operation of schools or to matters within the authority of the board. Those who wish to speak directly shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Also, speakers addressing the board shall take into consideration rules of common courtesy. Speakers who make attacks of a personal nature and or who do not abide by rules and common courtesy will be reminded of such rule by the forepresident or the sitting officer. Such individuals may be asked to leave a meeting if their behavior is disruptive or interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting. Also, please understand board members do not respond to public comments, but we will listen very carefully and follow up as appropriate. If there is an immediate need for clarification, we will do so after the speakers have had enough time. Um if you would like to uh speak, I can raise your hand or. Make your way over to the podium.
Good evening, Kevin Creach. Um, a couple of things, I love the discussion around outcomes and the M step, congratulations, a lot of good stuff. Our Dr. Timison past talked about, we got some work to do, we got actions to do. I'm hoping those are discussions we have here, this is intense and robust. So we can, as uh, as the public here, what's going on and how we're addressing some of our gaps. Um so that's one thing, another thing we is, uh, there's been some concerned citizens that have come up here over the last month or two uh talking about uh seeing uh more finite detail around our expenses as a school. Um I did hear trustee Zora talk during the Dexter forum about giving a spreadsheet once a month uh and how we spend money to the dying. I think the public deserves to see that, I hope he as a board uh talk to that and uh make a decision that that would be something we could share with the public, so we know where our money's being spent. Uh last thing I wanted to mention was uh in social media, I see board members uh liking or supporting certain folks running for the school board, I don't think it's appropriate. I think if that person loses and you're supporting them and the winner gets on and they know you supported them, it causes a little bit of conflict on the board and you don't want that with new members coming on. So I think you should think about that before you put yourself out there, you're supporting one board member over another. They may be your peer very soon or your boss. Thanks. So just as a matter of clarification, the board monthly financial reports are four pack every month.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
It doesn't show how we spend money to the dying, that's what I heard.
Okay. No one else running to the podium? We will move on to our district of board updates, starting with Dr. Timis.
Couple of things we're going through. First, uh we are going to start the GALE staff engagement survey from October tenth through twenty-fourth. I'll send some information on the staff this week and then the next week. Student engagement survey, it'll be the same thing. I'll send something out to parents this week along with. We went over it in the last meeting, the questions are, they're all this thing. The next piece I want to talk through, I was fortunate to see a presentation last week from Jamie Valmer. Jamie Valmer is a, is an author, studies schools. He has what he calls the list, and I, it's too fascinating not to share. So we continually look at, and some of the national narrative that schools need to get back to basics, et cetera. The last time we did just math, reading and writing was in the eighteen hundreds. So here's a list of everything schools have been asked to do, all the way back to the eighteen hundreds. So we included a picture, we took all of this stuff, et cetera, but added our initial Dexter Union School in eighteen eighty-seven. Um so from nineteen hundred to nineteen ten, schools, we were added in lessons of basic hygiene, courses on nutrition, immunization, screening for vision, hearing and death. That's the first time health department rules came into schools. And I want to point out, we have not had a single minute of the school year from the early nineteen hundreds. So as we go through the list, we have no more time to do. Um nineteen ten to nineteen forty, as the child labor laws were all, all put in place and students were no longer, our kids weren't on, just we put work in, they had to go to school. We've added vocational ed, including industrial arts, agricultural, and um science, domestic science, home ec, sewing, cooking, phys ed was expanded, and this is one athletic team star. Um we added school prep, transportation was mandated. And it used to be this, kids had to go to school and find their way on their own. In some areas, I know where I went to school, we didn't have buses, we had, there were no buses. So, but it was added back and it wasn't in nineteen ten. Some communities still don't have buses, but uh we're fortunate that we provide such a great bus service and the drivers are dating that there. So um but, oh, oh, I didn't see it, sorry about that. So we uh transportation was added back in between nineteen ten and nineteen fourteen. So in the forties, we also added business ads, typing, shorthand, bookkeeping, music and arts, um speech, including drama, became its own subject, half-day, half-day kindergarten were introduced, it didn't exist. Um school lunch programs started. And then in the fifties, we added science and math, we expanded foreign language, we started our fire tornado and our ducking cover. Um and then it became required. Driver's ed was offered in schools, sex education was introduced. So when we talk about reproductive health, it's not new, it started in the fifties. And then in the nineteen sixties, we saw the Elementary and Secondary Education Act pass, which started Title I. Um and from that point, we had head start by legal act, AP courses and programs, adult ed, consumer ed, career education, so that's when we started our occupational options and sort of the skill work and internships and um the old co-op programs, so that students could earn high school credit while they worked in an actual job during that. And then peace, peace studies. This, and these are not my words. So the seventies though, we started special education program, which is the largest. So when you look at the ISD budget, ninety percent of the ISD budget is special education. Um drug and alcohol abuse education, parenting ed, active earth studies, women's studies, talented gifted programs, alternative that, character ed. Behavior adjustment classes, environmental ed, Title Nine, in place and started to expand athletic programming for females. For female students, Supreme Court ruled in favor of free speech rights for students. And then school breakfast programs started. And we, all of these are going in place, and we have not had a single bit to the school year. In the nineteen eighties, keyboarding and computer ed, sexual abuse prevention ed, stranger danger education, if they're smoking education, teen pregnancy awareness programs, abstinence ed, mobile education, ESL programming, multicultural education. Uh and you just keep going, that full day kindergarten, jumpstart, early start, even start, prime start, which we run, early start. Preschool programs for every student, like uh grade school, ready this program, which runs down the hall. Uh after-school programs for children of working parents, so like after year of ISD. Uh expanded health and psychological services is when we open the doors to mental health supports at schools. And then school employees became mandatory reporters. So anytime we suspect child abuse, we are recorded, recorded, or we use our license or. So again, it had a single minute to the school year. So then in the nineties, the nineties, we started with computer labs and internet instruction. I remember teaching and having to teach my colleagues how to use the internet and how to log on to eat. Um tech prep, school to work programs, which were back to the old co-op, they came, they went away, and then they came back again. I still remember in the nineties presenting at the Nish or the Governor's School to Work. School to Work Conference, I was a first-year teacher and I'm standing in the room with the governor at the time, was Governor Angler on, supporting school to work program. Which then in two thousand, we went away, we're all saying, wait. Distance learning started in the nineteen. Distance learning started in the nineteen nineties. So then homeless education, we had McKinney-Bentley Act went in place that we had to be able to support our homeless students. So there are years when we bused students from as far as to Dexter and back every day because of McKinney-Bentley, which is the right thing. You want kids to stay where they're most supportive if they end up in some kind of life crisis. HIV and AIDS education started in the nineties, death education. Then there was, there were two pieces. There was the America Two Thousand Initiative, which came out during the George Bush Senior Administration. Then when Bill Clinton was elected, there was almost two thousand initiatives. So we had two sets of rules in the same ten years. And then bicycle safety, gun safety, and water safety. Then we started on foot for resolution classes, service learning programs, CPR training. You can just drop, drop out prevention, anti-gang issues are included in anti-gang lessons. Inclusion and mainstreaming requirements, and then IDE, the Individuals with Disabilities Education. Expanded what we do with special education significantly. And then we started to see school security lessons going. And again, not a single minute added in the school year. Twenty-first century, we get no child left behind, which is now completely rewritten, whole different set of rules, but during that time, we saw a wave of test tests. We started testing and measuring everything we could measure. Internet safety, bullying prevention, texting and social media etiquette, the elevator and escalator safety instruction. Joe, you're laughing. I remember doing lessons with kids that you had to meet the requirements for elevator safety. We only have one to two buildings we have to worry about within, but body mass index evaluation. Eating disorder counseling, suicide awareness programs, organ builder awareness classes, steroid abuse prevention program, media literacy training, spanner, early childhood wraparound programs, financial literacy development, true to your lockdown training, health and wellness programs, leadership training, and the list just keeps going on. Credit retrieval or credit recovery program started. Online learning requirements, back in the early two thousands, it became law that every high school student in Michigan must have been online or online served. That was in the early two thousands. And then we had the race to the top legislation, which we now live with all the ramifications. So back in the Great Recession, there was a series of laws passed. And what happened is there were federal funds waiting to go over every state's outside, states were really hurting for money. And the way the funds were put forward was your state could be awarded billions of dollars to invest all these laws. Those laws changed how we do teacher evaluation, they changed how we do highly qualified staffing, they changed how we do testing, they changed the ranking system and grading systems for schools. And only a handful of states actually got the money. So all the laws are put in place, we still live with them. But the state of Michigan is an example, they received money to put the laws into Michigan. So then Common Core standards and all of the, everything that came out of Common Core standards, and then STEM programs in the twenty-first century. And we have not added a single minute to the calendar. So, what I want to go over today though is, I want to talk about what we're seeing legislatively, and I want to tell you that I plan to schedule a series of community conversations to really talk about what is the purpose of school. Because you live as a board, everybody has their own definition of what school's for. We spend about one percent of our budget on athletics. And we spend a significant amount of time talking about athletics. We spend a fraction of a percent of our budget on different items. What are we really here for? Are we here for reading, writing, and math? Are we here for all the social emotional development? What, are we here just to get kids into college, or are we here to help kids just go to, go to get a job? We need to have a conversation. We've done, we did this pre-pandemic, talked about it during the discussion rounds of where we got to in terms of the order profile, but we really need to re-investigate that discussion. What is the purpose of school? Because when you look at what we've been asked to do at schools, not just Dexter, every school, we need to collectively as a community just kind of get back to center of why are we here? Why do kids go to school? What is their reason? So, that was the first part. And this actually, seeing all the different laws of impact is now I'm going to do a legislative one. I brought all the test scores, all the things that have been in, schools are not legislated. So the vouchers. The signatures for both proposals were turned in. It has to go to the Election Bureau and not, right now there's no education that the Bureau's going to review it this year. So depending on how the election shakes out in November, the organizers of those hard voucher proposals are either going to skip going to the legislature in twenty twenty-three and focus on a full ballot campaign with, or nobody's really sure, but that's, right now it's kind of tied up in the Bureau. We have this year, or coming November, House seats, Senate seats, statewide offices are all up, and lots of local school board offices. We have less than two months absentee ballots, and so and then because of the redistricting, a lot of the legislators have been moving around in the district. So it's really, it's, we're seeing a lot of shock. So, what is happening right now up in Lansing? So PA one eighty-four streamlines hiring back retired employees. So this allows retired employees from Michigan Public Schools, if they have sat out a nine-month period, they can return to work with no requirements on the shortage list, and that they can come back and we are not required to date into the retirement system as we were before. So what used to happen is they needed to sit out thirty days, have a, a complete separation of employment. Retired, and then they could never earn more than one-third their final ever. So this removes that one-third gap, but makes a nine-month sit-up. So we have retirees, we're hoping someone will want to self-teach again, or, and it used to be that they couldn't even work for a third part, they couldn't work for a new staff to sell. Now they can. But they have to have been out nine months. Do they sell if they've been out nine months? Yes, they can sell, they can do anything they want. They come back to be a full-time teacher. Do they have to wait for the nine months to sell? They have to be out at least nine months. So, there are some, there's an FAQ. There was, there was a grandfather clause that we let retire before the law passed that they may not have had to wait the nine months, and we'll need to check with our R S just to be sure. So what happens is, they had to grant the grandfather then, the law went into place July twenty-fifth. So they can check with someone retired prior to July twenty-fifth. The issue is if you were a school employee in last school year, whether your retirement was affected during the period or not. Those individuals will want to check just so they don't get mentioned or locked up. If they return the year before to me. So, there is, or the officer retirement services didn't really clear up if you employee or retirees, we'll have this presentation outside and put the information up for them, in case we can find some retirees that work at that department. So then, so the Senate passed the bill. It is not through the House yet. We filter first legislation. So this would create the Clean Drinking Water Access Act and require schools to have hydration stations, which we have. There'd be some money applied, it'll never be enough to keep them up, but we do have hydration stations throughout the buildings. We did pay this summer. We, because of the pandemic, we had to shut off all the drinking mountains. And before we could turn them all back on, we had to flush them completely. So we actually paid Craig, or Dennis, we had students paid this summer to stand and hold the buttons all day. They were willing to do it. So, it was a, it was a really hard job to recruit for. The kids were willing to do it to get paid. Now we can use it. So just last week, here were the introduced bills. So we had House Bill sixty-three ninety-three would fund eligible nonprofit organization contract under, implement firearms protection software in school property. House Bill sixty-four eleven would allow change the requirements for substitute teachers. Last year we were given a waiver and anybody could sell a high school diploma. Now it's back that they must have sixty credits of college, some training, et cetera. Now they're, that bill almost puts it back to lowering standards again. Sixty-four oh five creates an urban forestry program for high school students. Sixty-four eighteen recommends a model core academic curriculum, content standard for health ed, certain guidelines for health ed. Sixty-three seventy-eight creates a future educator scholarship program, which what it could do is that high school graduates could get up to ten thousand dollars in tuition pay. Senate Bill eleven seventy-four prohibits high school and low secondary institutions from, it has to do with the name, image, and likeness. So that high school kids, they can make money off of their name, image, and likeness. So then we have a series of bills around parental rights. So there's a, all chambers are pushing parental rights initiatives. There's resolutions about parental rights in education, there's bills requiring curriculum transparency. And then there's legislation establishing scholarships for parents that spend towards public learning laws. So curriculum transparency legislation says that, what the, and this is not passed, these are bills that have been presented. It would have a five percent state penalty, but curriculum approved by a district, textbooks, literature, research projects, writing assignments, field trips, extra curricula to be being implemented during designated school hours, and a list of each certified teacher responsible for implementing curriculum on the website. The reality is, until today, when you approve those hiring, we don't even have all our teachers. So, implementation will be probably just statistically. We do have many programs, we give our high school classes a syllabus, we give updates on what we're teaching, et cetera. The, having been a teacher, good instruction, you don't have your lesson plan for it. You're adjusting based on what you're and what they need next. You know where you need to get them. You have some plans of what you plan to do, but you're always adjusting. So the realities of this is, it sounds good, it is impossible to actually go to school. It's impossible. And it's actually bad instruction. So, learning loss, there is House Bill fifty-eight fifty-nine and Senate Bill nineteen twenty-five. Well, it set up a new grant of fifteen hundred dollars per student to use for services for private vendors for learning loss. Students must, their education must have been disrupted by mandated school closures or closures due to staff shortages, staff efforts or homeless efforts. So if the money, it failed to pass the House, this, we'll see what happens. It becomes available, offered, or family. Not sure what's going to happen, but these are some of the things that we're doing right now. With regard to parent rights, state law is very clear on powers of parents and legal guardians. So what the state law says, and it has said for many, many years, is in recognition of the rights of parents and legal guardians, the Board of a school district, public school academy, university school, or any intermediate school district shall ensure that a parent or legal guardian responsible for caring custody of a pupil enrolled in the school district. Public school academy, university school, or intermediate school district may do all the founding. Parents may always review the curriculum, textbook, and teaching materials at the school in which the pupil is enrolled at a reasonable time and place and in a reasonable minute. They may be present to a reasonable degree and at a reasonable times and subject to reasonable restrictions, controls, and limits. Who observe instructional activity in a class or course in which the pupil is enrolled and present. As used in this subdivision, instructional activity does not include testing. The Board of a school district, public school academy, university school, et cetera, they have reasonable policies or guidelines under this section. Those policies or guidelines shall not unreasonably prevent the exercise of the rights set forth in subsection one. It shall not create an unreasonable obstacle to teaching or learning, or to administering or maintaining proper discipline in a school program. If the Board adopts policies or guidelines under this section, it shall make the policies or guidelines available to the public. So, we have a policy, it's policy, I couldn't get it. Fifty-nine, or sorry, fifty-seven eighty, student parental rights. And it does say that people in consultation with parents provide access to the curriculum resources and other senior instruction. We also have a policy ninety fifty about relations with parents similar. So, we already have the pieces in place. It happened for decades. Tax cuts. So, Senate Bill seven sixty-eight, we dropped the personal income tax rate to three point nine percent, gave five hundred dollars for child non-refundable credit for defendants under nineteen. And give a write-off for taxpayers sixty-two or older. And then what, so the bill right now would impact the school aid fund in general fund by about two point five billion dollars. So that was vetoed by the government. There was a tax holiday recommended or proposed for fuel, for gas tax. It passed both chambers, the governor vetoed it. Now the governor is floating, postponing the federal gas tax. So what we're seeing, and this happens in elections, this is a period here that many, what we're seeing is we have a Republican-controlled House, a Republican-controlled Senate, and a Democratic government. There is a really, it's not a written understanding, but it's a very clear understanding. The House and the Senate are going to propose things they know the governor will never say. The governor is going to propose things she knows that neither chamber will take up because it's elections. That's what happens, and we're all subject to the woods. However, there is some meaningful legislation. So there's a dyslexia bill, Senate Bill three eighty through three eighty-three, which will really support students with dyslexia and change schools and require training, et cetera. We did adopt a program for dyslexic students several years ago. It puts, there's still work on the nuances of it, because some of it can be overreaching and over-prescriptive that isn't responsive to new research. So for example, when Jennifer asked earlier about the Lucy Hawkins work, there are times that the research patches up and says, wait a minute, we should do it this way instead. You want to be careful putting things in legislation that you have to change easily that are actually kind of contrary to what we learn in terms of science and research. So it would have, again, a series of bills to support dyslexic students. School safety, there are bills, House Bill sixty-three twenty would have us revise our emergency operations plans a little later than July first twenty twenty-four, or three-year gap. We just revised it. And we'll continue to revise, that was a party up two weeks ago, with final pieces. House Bill sixty-three twenty-one, requires a school to adopt the school safety and security training plan. That includes a school resource officer being assigned to the school. Not sure that'll pass in its form. Because there is funding required for a resource officer, and we need enough resource for enough police officers to period it. And trying to figure out how to staff additional. So, I see the practicality, something will happen, but probably not this year. House Bill sixty-three twenty-four standardized response terminology, terminology plan for school safety. So, more school safety, position-specific training for SROs and some other work. We had some more training for school safety and other bills. And one piece for individuals who are carrying firearms in their positions, training for decision-making and situational situations. So, fortunately, we did, Alice trained with all of our staff, like before school started again, and we did a refresher last year, so this would change and probably broaden training even more. Wouldn't have any more time to do. So then, school safety, the ISDs would have to create a new position for emergency safety manager and mental health coordinator. There's a new commission that would be created, and okay to say would be, we already utilize okay to say, and it works pretty well, but there are timely problems sometimes about and then teacher and counselor reciprocity. One of the challenges we have is, we, and we've experienced, we've had teachers who were certified in other states that could not get their certification transferred mission. We've had teachers who were certified, I'll pick one example, certified in New York, North Carolina, Florida, and a couple of other states, had a master's degree in the subject they actually taught. And at the time, the person moved to Michigan, we had to work through an MBE because there was no reciprocity. And they made that person go back to take the basic skills test for teaching. They made that individual who already had a master's degree in the subject they taught, take the SAT with a bunch of high school students, so they could teach high school students in the subject they already had a master's degree. So, they're trying to clean up some of the reciprocity for counselors and teachers, which would be a huge help, because we were an exporter of teachers at the state for decades. So budget, so we did see this year four hundred and fifty dollars for student increase. We saw an increase in ad res funding, so thirty-one A funding. We saw a special education increase. We saw, this is actually really thoughtful. So they put a billion dollars towards the pension system to try to pay down the unfunded, the UAA. Which was really good and they put some money into the reserve funds. They created a series of teacher recruitment and retention proposals. So we just sent out one of those to our staff the other day that any certified teacher, any teacher that is certified in any subject of issues. Can have up to eight hundred dollars of their first eighteen credits that come with special education, education teacher pay. And an instant certification for special ed. So that's one of those. We have, there's the Michigan Future Educator Program, there's, there's a series of grow your own and education programs. We're still waiting for information from the E on these fiscal year or the state doesn't start by the first, so we should be getting guidance any day now on what we can. There were two hundred and fifty million for school wellness and mental health. And we received, I'm gonna go through the details of these, but so there's a hundred and fifty million, we're equated to a hundred and seven dollars per student for mental health for districts. We're not sure if this is gonna be at one time or long term. So the challenge, we're gonna figure out if it's one time, how you spend it and that self-structure thing. If it's long term, not knowing if it's one time or long term, how do you build something that might be long term? Fifty million for trails, we are in two trails, but it wasn't like five million last year, now it's fifty million, so it's a significant increase. Twenty-five million to for existing ISD grants, twenty-five million for school-based health centers. And then some more for school safety, and I'll go into the details on these, I have everyone included here. So here's the category. So what happens is we get our foundation on. And then managing your own personal, the way you get paid to run your house, so you get a paycheck. And then you get a bunch of gift cards. You get them to like that fed back in the eye, get them to. You get one to track your supply, et cetera, and you have to try to figure out how to piece them all together. So we call those categoricals. So the categoricals, we have a bunch of them, but these are just new ones, there's a bunch to be here. And we've gone through these waves. So there was a wave in like two thousand and ten, two thousand and fifteen-ish of saying, there's too many categoricals, let's get rid of long roll and foundation. And then they went on an expanding spree. So algebra nation, it's a million dollars every year to run algebra nation. Nobody uses it, but they get a million dollars a year. There was, there's Ryan and I met with Booknote. Booknote gets a bunch of money this year, like five million to go offer Booknote. What happens, the districts have to pay for it, and then we have to ask for reimbursement to then pay, get our money back that we would have paid Booknote, so the logistics are still tricky. So then there's new categoricals. The first one is section thirty-one O. So that we were, we received this last year and it funded a hundred percent of new positions. So we added a district counselor, a two counselor, a school, some school site, a district social worker, a two social worker. Covered a hundred percent of their costs last year. This year covers two-thirds, next year covers a third. And then we had to say we would keep those positions forever. So section thirty-one P and thirty-one Q, we don't know the exact hour amount right now, we don't know if it goes to us first or if it goes to the ISD and then we have to go to the ISD. Thirty-one AA, so we already get thirty-one A funds. We're now gonna get thirty-one AA funds, which is four months off. So we must consult with the ISD, so we have non-duplication of services. We are receiving three hundred and fifty thousand dollars starting this year, we're already a month into school. We just were asked to send in the application open on Friday to apply. Couldn't get to work, we're done today to see what the rules are that we can even do it. So we're, one thing we know we can do is we added some council. We knew that one won't. We're now trying to figure out what else. Section eleven Y is two thousand for building for safety facility studies. We're waiting for the rules, that was in the application process that opened today and it really was, so you commit to doing this. And so if the bids, if we can find a vendor that'll do it for two thousand first step, exactly. And they have a bunch of requirements, but you gotta sign off, say, yeah, we'll do this, but I have no idea what I'm bidding to because we haven't even run a bid for it. Buildings were bid threshold, there's a bunch of. Section ninety-seven is for school security. We don't know if it's one-time money or long-term, so because we wanna think that it might not be long-term, there is a funding. There's no way that the markets can be doing what they're doing and we get more money. It's not gonna happen. So we are looking at right now, probably just working on replacing and upgrading cameras, our camera system across the district. Ninety-seven B, ninety-seven B funds a school resource officer, liaisons. The law does not say it had to be a new officer. The state police on Thursday gave a presentation saying it had to be a new officer that you put paper in this thing on. So we'll work through the details. Section ninety-eight C, we think it's a hundred and twenty thousand, but it's pretty nebulous. It's like apply for what you think you need and then we'll tell you after you do it how much you're shooting. For learning loss, there are no rules yet, Ryan is working on it. Section thirty-five A five. So that is forty-two thousand for added instructional time. So we are using this for reading. We have to apply by October twenty-first, we have an infrastructure device that this will just help us maintain and expand because you saw the data, we want to work on it early. Section one oh four H is benchmark assessments, twelve fifty per A students. We know those two. We're still sifting through the rest and it is sitting through the presentations. In MBE's defense, the legislature passes laws, they write a paragraph. They have legislative intent, MBE, that has to figure out how to administer it. It takes them time to sort through, figure out how to scale across the state, go to the school district, everywhere from Dexter to a small school, the PD to a large district, larger district. So they're giving it to us as fast as we can. Budget, we have, there's five hundred million for infrastructure and consolidation, but nobody knows the details. On how that money have we spent? If we can apply, we'll apply. I'm not sure, it won't be consolidation. So it'll be, uh, it'll be, well, if there's money for infrastructure, we'll see if we can, based on what. There are ten million for CTE reimbursements, so we do have this year with building trades, we're working on the house and they're building sheds around the district. And then we'll have the team to work after they finish the house. We have another building project with that. And we, there's ten million to recruit, retain CTE teachers, we're looking at a couple of programs for next year, if they would like to add. Thirty-four million for great start readiness, we already have great start readiness, which would increase opportunities for students, for preschoolers. ISD received some more money, which they were flat for years. Their cost numbers up, they were flat. Twenty-five million for before and after school programs, some of those are recorded on your through, it's not trade, a lot of things we don't call hard because they're like so low. And then English language order services, there was an increase, et cetera. So what'll happen the rest of the year, usually even here, this is what happens as far as legislation. Is they met two days in September, which is slow, there's some political bills that never go anywhere, they just kind of sit or they get some kind of. And then November eighth, there's a general election and as soon as whoever wins is decided. Then we write up the next due, we get the link up. Link up can be uneventful, in even years it generally is not. So you had every gift going to everybody that ever made a deal to pass something on something else. And there was one year, a few years back, when there were one hundred school bills passed in one day. And then we spent the rest of the year trying to figure out what our rules are. Back to the presentation I showed you, do you follow where the list, this is how it happens. So hopefully that duck is uneventful. If it is eventful, we could have a whole bunch of stuff, it's a lot of things in the hop. I think that's enough for me. We needed it here.
So the, the school year is underway, well underway now, so everyone, everybody's settling in nicely, schedules are getting ironed out. And classes will be up.
Yeah, the quick news will be that this weekend, high school, it is homecoming for football, there'll be the homecoming parade this Friday, the homecoming game this Friday. And the celebration and then pretty much all the school summer sports or fall sports are going on right now, coming to a close within a month or so, so we're well underway.
I think building regarding spirit, spirit weeks, spirit week, I'm pretty sure building principal sends out Spirit Day. So those have been today's as well. One of your potatoes. I didn't bring it here, but.
The band, Dexter High School Marching Band will have its Chelsea Festival performance this Wednesday. All the bands go around in the area. Not compete, but they have professional judges tell them how they're doing. Dexter usually does near perfect, so we'll, we keep it up. Our band is doing well, and it finally matches the football team, like football teams at the level, so it's a good year to have a.
It sounds a little hot, but they stay private next year now because it's.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, we'll move on to our consent items. Our consent items are typically approved in bulk. We have our August pledge of record and then we are personnel, we have some exciting new hires. From the Board of Education, consent items involved. We moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent items in bulk, say aye.
Aye.
All, anyone against it, say nay. Sorry, that long update just turned me right on. Everybody says nay, okay. So we will move on to our action items, we don't have any. So we'll move on to our discussion items, which starts off with the updating discussion of our strategic plan and school improvement process. Dr. Thomas will share a presentation on strategic plan, which were adopted in March twenty twenty-two. This item will also include discussion of the school improvement process.
So talking about test scores already, I promise this will not be as long as my. So when we look at how you approve test scores, students, there are five key actions that have to happen in years. So you have to have a clear instructional model and be able to build your internal capacity. So you have to recruit and train your staff and you have to maintain. And then universal supports for students. So you need to build a support system like we use graduation coaches, literacy coaches, et cetera. Create new opportunities for students so that they always, the world's changing constantly for outside of school and what the world is going into is going to change. And then a robust instructional support system. So this is where we have instructional coaches, the digital ecosystem, et cetera. So we spent some time years ago talking about our vision prioritization for school. So it is champion learning development, it's like, we then flushed out what we called the help, which is that we all have. And what we've been working on is, that's what we want to do, and then how we want to be able to go about it is the instructional. So years ago, we asked, we tracked down our alumni, we tracked down consent to the entire community, and we asked this question in ours. Our teachers, the rest of our staff, our kids, our parents, what are the most important skills now in security, trace, or courage, is needing to be successful in teaching? And they came back and they said, and we were able to flush it out and sort it under develop, educate, inspire. And we were able to say for develop, they said collaboration, creative critical thinking and communication. For educate, they said information literacy, content knowledge, financial literacy. For inspire, they said kindness and empathy, personal responsibility, resilience, and addition. So we flushed those out and we defined, and it's written on our website, definition of what we mean by creative. We then, during the pandemic, we created a. We created a learning continuum of what we want kids to learn and how we would measure based on zero to eight. Here's an example. So creative critical thinking from zero to eight, so it's not matched by grade levels, so zero is preschool. Zero, one, and it's kind of like going to an anchor deep. One and twos will go through a repeated widely. And then two, three, fours, Creekside, three, four, five, Creekside, and then six, seven, eights, middle school. Level eight actually matches the definition in that box right there. So that's where we're getting it. So we did this during the pandemic, we advanced our teachers, we engaged community members, et cetera. So when we look at our strategic plan, so we, as the board adopted this in two years of creating it by strategic condition. They are centered around vision, culture, learning continuum, steadily learning opportunities, and diversity equity. So the way we're making this reality, we're in the midst of this work right now, we had another meeting today with our, with our group, it's called the Delta Group. And the initial PLC, maybe we'll show you how this is the change. So we have created a structure where we have what we call the Delta. So it's the district leaders, teachers, and something, it was an administrator. So Delta, I just keep wanting to paint a band, like the eighteen band, but anyways, so they are focused on vision. So that is what the Delta team is in charge. Then we have created voluntarily with teachers and administrators across the district, we have about eighty total participating. These PLCs, one is on culture, one's on learning continuum, one's on extending learning opportunities, and the other one is on diversity equity. What'll happen is the Delta group, well, their goal. The vision goal is to develop unified collaborative and supportive teams. So that's how we're going to take the vision and make champion learning, develop, educate, inspire mean something that every one of our organizations, starting with this, this group. So the Delta team has to be able to lead the PLCs. And that's how they're gonna develop unified collaborative and supportive teams. There will be a PLC on each of the other four areas of the strategic point. Created with teachers and administrators throughout the district, which they're working on, we get support staff, it's a challenge, that will be. Now they're all figured out. And then they'll go back to buildings, there will always be an overlap. So there are members of the Delta group that are in buildings and in PLCs, there are members of PLCs that are in buildings and in Delta. There are people that are in all three. What happens is it's a flat leadership model, so I'm just a participant. So it is really how we're gonna develop supportive collaborative teams. So the culture group is working towards this strategic initiative and this goal. And they will work with the Delta, the Delta members, there's, we've split them today into four groups. So they'll, they'll be facilitating the culture PLC, which has a cross-section of teachers and administrators across the district. And the cycle goes like this. So on, and I'll show you the rotation, so on October tenth, the Delta group will meet to plan the PLC. On that Thursday, two of the PLCs will meet. On that Thursday, the Delta members will run that PLC, that whole process. They'll meet, the Delta group will meet for an hour on Monday, and then they spend two to two and a half hours. And then the other two PLCs meet that next Monday, it's the only way we can dodge all staff meetings, we get district representation. And then the Delta team will meet again right after the debrief. And then we'll meet again to plan the next one, it sounds a lot like a, like a scrum model. It's, we're doing agile, so what's gonna happen with cultures that gallop data will be developed in November, that'll be our baseline data for that culture. So then the learning continual group will meet in that rotation facilitated by groups from that Delta team who are also part of the team. They have two goals. The first one was create the P twelve learning continuum, which I showed you, we already did that, we were way ahead of ourselves, now we have to. Because we got, we had a window airways. Because we got, we had the window airways locked in their houses, we're like, only as a free while we're at it. Um, now we get into a post pandemic, probably a little itself. And then identify and define instructional strategies that support multiple pathways. So this work, you started an instructional framework that looks at in terms of develop, educate, and inspire. How instructionally you approach it. So you have times you would be very critical, so that's normal, there's a lot to cover, it's a minute's time. Like an AP class, a lot of times it's critical, so AP says you must teach this. Then you have teacher driven, so it's really teacher directed, and then you get to learner centered, which is where we get the development, where kids are really starting to be collaborative, more creative. And then you get to the learner driven, which is a lot of freedom, you got that personal responsibility, resilience, creating their own work, et cetera. So what happens in the instructional framework is we're going to roll this out as part of that learning continuum. Across the district, have these learning watches, teaching, learning, children's classrooms, and what will happen is we aligned it with. Strategies, research-based strategies on effective teaching practices, so we don't have to argue what works or not, there's a lot of research, like. If you use this practice, it has an effect size of point eight, which means it has a huge impact. So we have, we aligned it, so the, the next work is that PLC, I'll teach you a way out of it. We have our pathways we created, um, we started this night for a group working on creating a pathway right now, they have some kids, they're trying to create based on the kids' interest. What it's going to turn into, so we've been creating these pathways. The next group are the extended learning opportunity group, it's a PLC, a group of teachers and administrators across the district that'll be working on these extended learning opportunities for kids. Develop skills outside of the classroom. Not in our, necessarily in the one thousand ninety-eight hours of instruction, we know that it's develop skills in a lot of ways, they develop skills in a job, they can distribute a ten-hour experience. Some, they get it through a sport, which is one of our other activities, gotta be a way for us to scale that. Uh, and then last is our diversity equity inclusion work, so this PLC will be working on unpacking that goal and the next steps. And making sure that everything we do has to happen within our core work, construction. So we can't work on culture. Can't work on culture without doing that in context of teaching and work. We can't work on how to reach every student unless we have very clear learning and teaching and learning strategies that are consistent. We can't do extended learning opportunities, we haven't mastered what we do in traditional setting. So they're all interrelated, and that's our work, and this is how you actually take the test scores and scale it. And it's by doing, it's the strategic work, it's by building those teams, by doing all five of these things at the same. It's nice. So I promise to be sure.
I am, I was on. All right, you're in the wheels, my teacher's on here, all, it's all altered, I believe, teachers are, a lot of teachers on the left.
Very, very, you know, forward thinking, very thoughtful.
And if you want to look at making systemic changes for kids, you have to figure out how you can systematize the work. And it's this whole Delta PLC building group, is how do we systematize it? So it's not just coming from an IA, get adopted this plan, help me do it, doesn't work. It's got to be a living, breathing plan that stands, they have input on the next steps, you know, it really, all of these things have to happen. And in the most recent teacher contract, we actually built in PLCs as a voluntary option, we had eighty of our staff deciding.
Um, it's a key update.
Hey. We need to have a conversation. Oh, um, can you very quickly push the red button? Yes, so we don't have to see.
Welcome everyone, all right tonight, so before we go talking about forward thinking of where we are, so part of my role is to be of years being forward thinking and proactive, proactive and something. So you've heard us talk over time of staffing issues across the district, and one of the places we've been really looking at is in our transportation department, finding enough bus drivers. Uh, Denise Smith and Lori Farmer have done a phenomenal job of really finding all the ways to make the drivers work each and every day. Um, and just adjusting the route, so what we've been doing though is how to make sure that stress, we've got a couple incredible drivers here tonight for us. Um, we, we've got a plan that if, what would happen in the case if we ran out of drivers one day? So we want to be proactive, um, like I said before, um, our school bus drivers were our first ones to see the kids in the day, they're the last ones to see them at night. We, the proposal I'm going to talk to you about, we talked with the drivers, they were on board, their biggest part was me to take care of our kids and families, so how are we going to make sure this works great? So, um, it just felt really good for them to be part of this process, like, okay, what, what's a last ditch, last ditch, last ditch plan if we have to adjust? So what we've looked at, and you know, Chris brought it up, mentioned to us, and other districts have done this, they've done rolling shutdowns of routes. So what we want to, um, our proposed plan is right now is to start end of October, we have about twenty routes that we know that we could. That we service, we can shut down, some of our routes that uh, take our students with IPs that are mandated for the transportation, we can't shut those routes down, but we do have other routes. So we're looking at building a schedule in to shut down two routes a week from October to the end of the year.
Not necessarily.
Not, let, let me finish, let me finish, let me, let me finish, yes, yes, yes. Again, last ditch, hopefully we never have to use this option, it's just a plan we're bringing, as of right now, the plans that work. Um, Denise drives, Lori will drive, our two mechanics will drive, um, where we, it's, they've always been able to make it work. We're hoping that they can always continue to make it work, but we want to be thoughtful if we start really getting short on drivers. So what would happen is there would be a schedule to say, uh, route five and route seven on this week have the possibility of being shut down. So it's the week of October twenty-seven, the week of January fifth, the week of April fourth. I just made it, you know, so as a family, you would know that if we are short drivers that week, I, it could be a possibility where I would have to drive, bring kids home, or not bring kids home. Take kids to school and then pick kids up. Um, we would do this again, it would be on a, on a weekly basis, Denise would know her driver, she would know if someone is going to come in or not, um, so. Um, if we were going to be shorter with a plan, we would guess it's an asset.
So what we want to do is figure out, we need a hail mary instead of waking up one morning, we can't rush her, the parents are all surprised. To be able to say, okay, parents, so like my son, be notified now that these three weeks this year have a backup plan just in place. And if we are short, your route won't run that week or that day, and have a backup plan, we'll be months ahead of the plan. But what we know will happen, we don't, we don't want it to happen, but what we know is we're so close, we made it through last year. Most districts did, but we made it through last year. We are close enough now that we really need a hail mary, and we owe it to our families a lot at this point.
How are they going to? So we have, because you guys. I know there's different things, because you know, you all, you're left down, make your part of the road, yeah, but. It's a great question, so.
If you're on. Or uh, extra processing, you know, well, you guys run it.
We, we've looked at, we've looked at various things throughout all the, of walk, of routes, right, what could be walking routes, can we make a bigger walking zone? That, um, that, that isn't brought up right now, look at a walking zone, we, what we've done is we're going to take routes that are in close proximity together, right? And we want to make it equitable, so if there are two routes that service the north side of Dexter. Our thought was, we may kind of pair those two routes up, so in case our families, McCullens, O'Havers live close, but they're on different routes, we might be able to partner to bring our students to school or take them home. So we didn't want to do routes on opposite sides of the district, if we're going to pair routes, we'll pair routes, when we pair routes, we'll pair routes in close proximity. We also didn't want to take a route that says Dexter Crossing is close, let's just always shut that route down, that's not fair to those families on that route either. So there is, there is a system of how we would look at shutting routes down, we try, like I said, find proximity to each other and then do it on a basis, so, um, it's equitable there.
So we're hoping to never use this, I mean, the challenge is you can't cross the, kids, we can't get a hundred kids across the. We just.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you got kids that live far out, they're not going to come to school. I, I, I'm not, I'm not offering a solution unfortunately, so, you know, I'm just kind of. Kids are far out, their parents don't have alternative. Yeah, I don't, I don't say all of them come to school, all the parents join together.
That's why we want to get.
Yeah, it's probably like, this is a discussion.
I know, I know, I appreciate it, but.
I don't think you can rule out. It's me saying this, closing down some routes. You ever walk up there, there was a bus, there was a bus up there. I just think, I think about that because that is.
Times may have changed, but way back when I had hair, why, uh, we had snow days where we would have school, no buses. And we had over ninety percent of the kids at ten, so I think, uh, parents do get creative when they have to. Work together.
I have a question about, uh, I appreciate what you're saying, Dan, but I also appreciate that you're going to give parents a possible or advanced planning of this possibly happen, happening. Do you, you said the weeks, do you know what weeks you're picking? And is it based on like traditionally, these are weeks that you have. Hard time staffing, like maybe Lucy's and that's or whatever, or is, but I, I just, I'm interested.
We have, no, we had, we didn't go through the calendar and say this week in November, we're short drivers typically this week in January. To be honest, what we did is we looked at the routes that we had, we have twenty routes, so that could take, we pair them up, that's where it's at ten. If you took the thirty weeks, I didn't do the very last week of school, I did that week of June ahead of it, backtracked all the way thirty weeks. And basically that got us to October twenty-fourth, I think, would be, that gave us a month here to start the conversation, work out a plan, communicate to our families. So, and it would just be, we would just start, we'd run the block of ten three times.
That's true, and that's how you're rotating.
And that would be just rotate, so yeah, it would just be, we'd start with the pairing of bus three and five, and then the next pairing of bus ten and eleven, then the pairing of, and then it would just rotate all the way through the calendar year.
And then we're hoping we don't need it, but what we do know is that there is a likelihood of our staffing levels right now, there's going to be a day where we can't put a route.
Our, our, our drivers are going above and beyond, we need suggestions of can we combine routes and pieces of routes, and we've done that, we've already had plans for that, right? If all of a sudden route ten shut down, well, I know we could put ten kids on fifteen, eight kids on this route, we can combine it, we can make it work. Denise and Lori have been masterful about making that work, we have drivers, our utility drivers, we're is one of those that can drive any route in the district. Um, of making it work, so we have those drivers that can pick up where needed, um, we have a plan for drivers, um, that if they were to have to drive during that, they, they left practice. We, we have some utility routes that our drivers are going to get. Know the route, they're going to be the ones that they can drive it, know they can drive it safely, and our utility drivers that will be able to jump into any route necessary. So we also have a plan for the drivers, for their confidence level, for their safety level, to feel good about the plan we prepared as well.
Are we likely to go before the morning of the day?
That's the whole, that's, that's why we want to get something in place, so that it's not, so we can build the infrastructure. We can add families, maybe we go the way that they can get, they don't have a way to be able to get their kids to school, but they want to know if there's someone else on the bus that, that's the same problem. We build a structure that we put in touch, uh, we want to be able to have a way to be able to say that, say it's at this time on a Monday night, we know we're going to have one tomorrow, that we. Push the button, notify that, so the families, they're not surprised when they get, potential for that week, instead of just doing it now without.
You know, the night before, I understand, try to figure out, never, you'll find out till six thirty in the morning.
We'll probably scramble and.
Well, and that's the problem, most of the drivers are really good by six o'clock, Denise and Lori know if there's a plan. If we have a structure set in place by, it, it would, it would be in our best interest, I think, to let families know, if by six thirty there's going to be a plan, you will be notified. I, I think there's got to be some sort of timeframe so that, that they know, like Denise, if on a Friday before your week, you send a text, email to those families that say, as of right now, your route's looking fine, please prepare, that there will be a bus for you. You know, I, I think we're going to have, that's going to be the, as Chris just said, there's going to be, like, we're not going to know perfectly.
That's the worst case, when you find out. Because you have some parents that are good. That's why I want to give a little advance notice for the whole year, that plan, look at these three weeks for your child's route.
This administration's going to have to help them. But I think you mentioned that already, yeah. That's why we're looking at the proximity of the routes to, to make the routes, if they're going to be close, so if we added, we had a higher likelihood that a family is needing a, a partner. It's not, and again, hopefully you never have to use Denise and Lori, they have worked for years, hopefully, but.
But it's getting to the point, it's becoming, we need a plan, we could, we've used lots of plans, we get to this car, we're still going to keep trying to recruit drivers. Uh, we have been fortunate to dodge the problems that every other district's having with the national bus driver shortage. But it's getting close enough that we need some backup plan, we need a hail mary, we need a draw, and we owe it to our families, we need a plan. Some ways that this is the best model we've seen out there so far.
In a sense, it's not a lot different than snow day, where people may not get notified till in the morning, if they know what to expect, and we're all set to blast out to the right group of people, that's probably the best way to do it.
What do you got, upset?
I'm going to talk, I'm talking, you did.
And I guess especially, like, still think that. If you shut down, I don't know the answer, I don't know how many, like, is this one route within like that block of school between, behind your, on, on. So depending on the size of the walking zone, and depending on how many routes, when we've looked at it for a walking zone within the community, I think it would save us one, maybe two routes. It's not like it would save us four routes, we shut them down, of walking zone would save us a huge number of routes. Save you two routes.
We're literally just a hybrid right now, those routes, so we have the bus drivers do a drop off, a back pickup for kids, and we have another one.
So it's same, right? It's a route for the same, right?
Yeah, we end up in something, those are drop offs. But one of the challenges, and I've been in districts that have a lot of walking zones, uh, one of the challenges is our way that towns set up with their triangle and then. It's just that I've designed.
Hard to cross.
Say the cross. Yeah, we have it, you can now cross, and it always has a couple of rapid flash, because the city finally put it, probably not in the right spots for the actual pattern where kids walk. Um, but if you sit out there in the morning and watch how many cars are down there, you can't cross straight. It's really hard.
Part of the conversation to the city at Hilltop, another crossing right there at Hilltop, so maybe those students can come across from Hilltop. Because right now, the goal is for them to walk down to, walk about, cross, then walk back up.
But there's no sign.
Human, human, there's no sidewalk, and human nature isn't going to have us walk a hundred yards down the crosswalk, and you're going to cross the shortest distance.
So I appreciate the need for the plan, and I think parents would appreciate knowing in advance, um, when they may have an issue. I guess I would also ask the district to consider whether the buildings could open earlier if these plans need to go into place. Um, so that parents who might be working, draw a lot, like, if you had air pros on backup, open the cafeteria a half hour earlier, I don't know what time they'll end up. Uh, schools open, but even just thinking about my school and what time my. I already have transportation issues there, so just considering maybe a backup of enhancing sort of monitoring of students in the building, if we have to do that. I only have transportation issues there, so just considering maybe a backup of enhancing sort of monitoring of students in the building if we have to do that. Cause I know a lot of parents. At maybe seven AM. So I don't know what that would look like, but I would just be consider it.
Any other thoughts?
Listen to the drivers.
There's any other thoughts?
They continue the local plans. We're hoping to never use it. We just, at this point, we know we have to do something. So we know we have to plan. We need a, we need a, we need a hail Mary.
At, at the end of the year, I had a different question. Thought I were hearing that there was stress in the department. So I think that was very showing to me that they were able to work through it and just figure it out. And, uh, I'm, I'm really happy to hear that the bus drivers are supportive and trying to get to, because they have such a tough job and, uh, I just have to almost respect.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's an amazing place when you go to Denise and Lori, baby, Maria, group this form, right? They all help each other constantly about how do you make it work? Who's coming in? Who can cover? Who can, I mean, what they do is amazing. It's just they're, we'd love some wonderful drivers to join that team, um, anybody. So we'll just keep putting it out. We're gonna get some additional signs. It's gonna go radio ad again out there, just looking for more drivers like everybody does, um, just trying to get.
There's nobody pull their, their magicians.
I, we, we could probably use four easy, right? I would say at least four really easy. Um, that, that would just help relieve some of that stress. We're trying to grab, um, adults left and right that I can just do AMs. That's great. I can just do PMs. Wonderful. I can do on two, it's wonderful. Like, so we're, we're taking adults as, as fast as we can that want to join our teams. Anything else? Please, any other thoughts? First, I know.
Yes, so it's, I just wanted to talk about it since it's become a reality that we need a.
Moving on to our third discussion item, which is the MAS B Assembly Resolution. The MAS B Annual Assembly will be Thursday, October twentieth, at seven PM at the Grand Travers Resort. And it's, um, at our September twelve, twenty twenty-two meeting, Board Selecting Local Representatives to Represent PCS and Moving Packet. With Elise Bruterly as the ultimate district staff, subsequently discover that Dexter can cut off three dockets. So Elise Bruterly's name was certified as a regular delegate instead of ultimate. Uh, there are considerable number of amendments that the Assembly will be voting on. Capulation of the resolutions is included on our packet for numbers for review resolutions and bring any particular concerns to the next meeting, October tenth, uh, twenty twenty-two for discussion. So that Mara and Elise will know the board stands on various issues.
Hey, Chris, can you have, um, I'll, I'll look at G seven point two zero. G seven point two zero. Oh, it's like it's.
Seven point two.
Oh, yeah.
G seven point two zero. G seven.
And we have never been, I mean, this is a reality that we get time, or we get pressured for our kids to go to the national tournaments. It's really about big league business.
This is for, I believe this is for.
So I have one that I just wanted to have a chance to look at under the advocacy resolutions. Letter E. It's A six point two zero. Well, the, the text is on page twenty-nine. And it is like the top. It's under instructional time and paragraph is the MAS B needs to like professional development hours. For the instructional time requirement should be discretion of the school district. The school district should consider whether or not the professional development positively affects student achievement, what can I require in instructional time? In light of other conversations that we've had and because of my personal belief that all professional development helps kids, I just wondered whether we wanted to suggest that, professional development hours not be. The ten and eight hours, the hundred eighty days. I know I read that paragraph like out in the middle of the. But so that people can review it for next time. That was a paragraph that I was looking at, but I wondered if we wanted to.
I was wondering if that would be in that.
It, yes, it is.
Really, a lot of reasons we, uh, the board have to appoint this.
I guess it was, I, I guess my thought was that it doesn't even have to, like, it can still be a discretion of the school district, but do we want, like, machine association of school boards to, uh, comment on that specifically or to have it not specifically? Something to think about. I didn't. It was just something that I noticed because the conversation that I heard as you had, and I thought it was worth thinking about.
Do we have a real like that? We are now.
It was kind of.
Uh, yeah.
And you got the, yeah, I think it's the, yeah, so the strikeouts, but the general, my, my read was that the general resolutions and advocacy related resolutions were passed and approved last year. And so these would be exact same as last year. So yeah, of course, I think. So it would have to be pulled out if we did want it to change or if we did want. So these are the same. And starting on page thirty-five, running amendment. That they can't.
It's subject to district. We can look at it and talk about it in the next meeting. Any others? Okay, uh, we'll move on to our second. Same as before, but now you have a, uh, you are allotted a maximum of three minutes or twelve, uh, fifteen minutes. And, uh, seeing if the person who spoke before is no longer here, there's no, um, no issue that someone would speak up and again. Alright, so if anybody would like to, uh, speak, you can raise your hand or make your way. Pushing or shoving to the podium. Alright. Julio, we'll move on over to, um, our, our comments. Longley, do you want to talk up the community chat? We're here at six PM. Throw favor, join Mara and myself, and we did meet with the community members, so we are off to wait. We won't start. You know what? But that's okay. A community member shows up for his first chat and talks about an issue, so I think that is really a good start. It's been what, two weeks plus three, two and a half years since the last time. So it's funny, in my, in my notes, I actually saw that our last community chat, chat was March tenth, twenty twenty. Oh, so again, somebody showed up and we had a chat. I think it's a success.
It was probably a super spread.
Well, I didn't get it, so. Um, yeah, and I thought it was funny that I was like, oh, look, there's the last number. But yeah, it, obviously, I think it's something that's very important to have our community have opportunity to. Speak to us and maybe hope that it could grow, um, at each opportunity. Um, and then there's the facilities committee, sorry, facilities committee update. That is me. Uh, the minutes are in the board packet. We went over, uh, we're looking at for series two bond. We're, yes, we're walking through. Buildings. Put that on there. Um, and then. Does anyone have any other additional board comment? Wait, is the. So there's another option.
I appreciated the presentation of the. Pretty good. Especially at the high school, science and social studies. Were really good. Social studies ones spit out after the thirty-minute legislation, legislative update. Glad that our high school students have a solid foundation in our government and. How bill becomes a law and the role of the local governments, hopefully, how our communities operate. Appreciate the update on the law. I've read some.
It is this time of year, every two weeks, an even year. What is real, what's just public? Couple of them are ridiculous. Well, sometimes I'll accidentally got one out.
I think about the close to a hundred percent of the public, uh, with some of the stuff here by the base. Not enough to analyze all of that. And I think perception in the public. How they real misperception. The board's role is to create the goals and hold public calm, not to come up with brilliant answers for staff that's living with it every day. And really understands where you can make impact and where you can't.
I, um, I wanted to give a shout out to Fred Strong for keeping us updated on the spirit of the weekdays, because I know that's always a huge thing. And I know that several board members, we all individually thought, I should just wear pajamas because today was pajama day, so. But I was corrected by my children. I thought Wednesday was western wear, but no, we put that as neon day. So, yeah. So it's very, it's very. Little shirt. We, we put up some photos, Brad Strong put up some photos of board members showing their school spirit, whatever costume you want to wear to this. I can wear my RC jokes. Yeah. All kinds of social media while we're, everybody's getting hyped up. Yeah, sharing spirit.
And if you'd like to spend some time on Friday, we'll be putting Fred Strong's side of the program. It sounds much more than.
Yes, great.
I gotta, I gotta be on. Next year, so, sir, I, I've seen this one at University of Michigan. They take all the clubs, teams that have won either the conference championships or national, and they come at the end of the field, they give them a quick two second. It's not long, it's no minutes, and they walk in the office and say, they're not, they're not wearing it. But, you know, a lot of teams are here that don't really get to that.
Highlighting that.
Yeah, I mean, you can do, you have to do it for the, you do it for the year before. So you do all the teams of last year, they won, you know, some of them obviously played. We didn't lose. They don't want either.
We did have a state title.
Yeah, we did that.
This is.
I think that was on, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was a few teams too. I don't know if it was every team we had, but it just got a couple of that, like, I think it was spring sports.
It was state titles.
Yeah, oh, it was just the titles.
Of which we have a lot of teams that.
I, I just think.
The action, I think you about actually does.
Problem. It's not all just. That's something else.
We're hoping with, now, we will have the bleachers. I know. Almost done. Craig and I are screwing together ourselves.
Is that, uh?
We have to do it ourselves.
Realistic. Through.
Yeah, it's already.
I just have one more comment that I was getting fresh on, that's supposed to be celebrated. Um, there's, uh, informative items into our, um. There's informative items in our fact, I did enough in the journal too. Uh, and we moved into closed session at the vote. I moved at the board of education, moved into closed session, the process of discussing. Oh, after a five minute break. Go break. It's moved in second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Go break. Uh, say aye. Alright, we moved to a closed session after. Yeah.